Good evening and welcome to the November 10th, 2016 Planning Board Meeting. Chip sent me an email saying we had a conceptual tonight, but nobody, and I got eight copies of the application here, but since nobody appeared to talk about it, we'll just let that sit there. Being that this is a workshop, we should, and I would like to talk about at least Rhodes Investing.
Did you not want to talk about something that's more pressing from a time point of view, and that is zoning amendments? Rhodes Investing, certainly the Rhodes are subdivision amendments.
Rhodes Investing.
Investing is subdivision amendment also?
Yes.
Okay, then don't we want to talk about zoning amendments because of the timeline?
Was that this week or next meeting?
It goes next week. It was on next week's agenda.
Okay.
You got me all confused. Yes, that's what I was looking for, the calendar.
No hearing, are you doing?
November.
I'm looking for November.
Let's see if we have it.
We get a big, first zoning board hearing, zoning board's hearing is next week.
That's the hearing, but aren't, should we decide now the kinds of things you'd like to propose for consideration at the hearing? It's pretty difficult to have a hearing if there's no proposal on which comment can be received.
We can talk about that if anybody, if people would like, I'm open to anything.
We had a big discussion in connection with an application for the kennels, and I thought there was some sort of sense on, sentiment on the board, that we should amend the zoning ordinance to allow kennel operations up to 20 dogs, I think was the number that was being talked about, in the rural agricultural zone.
I agree. I wrote down kennel right there, a big question mark. That's the only, that's the only one I have, by the way.
So, when the notice goes out for the meeting, it should mention that one of the things that will be considered is kennels. And I don't, I don't know, I don't remember Craig, whether during the course of the year, you had written down other things that you thought required changes, either technical changes or structural changes.
I don't believe I did. The only thing else I remember was the sign ordinance with that court case that we talked about briefly.
The Reed case?
Yes, Reed.
The one where we can't ordinance, can't create an ordinance against technology or something along those lines?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that our ordinance isn't, is, has a problem when it comes to Reed. Craig sent me the Warner ordinance, and, you know, there are some iffy things there, and Ben Frost looked at it and said, you know, "It's not terrible. It might withstand." So ours is, I won't say identical, but we have the same issues that they do, so I'm not sure that we need to take any action.
Even about the electronic part?
Even about the electronic part. And Warner has some rules on that, too.
I didn't read them, I just ordered them, I'm sorry.
I brought it up a second ago, but I know that the city of Conk we have a moratorium on those large electronic signs.
No, this is just a zoning.
Unless they grant that in, then they have a lot more.
There we go.
Certainly is ruled for.
That's okay.
Prohibition.
And rather than, than change the ordinance to reflect something that might be marginal or might or might not be covered by Reed, I think the better plan is to keep the ordinance as it is, and wait and see if other, if there's a further definition of what Reed requires as other towns or other organizations go to court over these things.
The specific issue that, that was brought up regarding the electronic signs from a month or two ago, I believe it was, from that person, that group.
Yes.
I have no problem with that particular instance, but I wouldn't know how to word inclusion of just that.
Which one, which particular group are you talking about?
Gas prices.
The gas, the gas prices. The LED, they wanted to have a LED gas price sign, instead of having the changeable message board by my plastic letters and numbers. They wanted to have a digital sign out in the street.
Which they're gonna be doing, because they get.
They got a variance.
A variance for it.
Okay, they did.
Who does?
Mobile station.
How'd they get a variance?
Went to their ZBA.
They're gonna have a big sign there?
No, changeable gas prices.
Actually, actually, it's actually gonna be a smaller sign.
What size is it?
I don't know, you have to check the ZBA.
I think it's just like anything, if you go by the Irving Station, they have their gas prices posted electronically.
But it's on a huge sign?
No, this is just a little tiny thing with three prices on it.
The sign is huge, and then there's a small changeable price thing.
That's it, it's on a small sign.
It's just a small.
The actual size of the sign was gonna be smaller than what was there now.
With the plastic changeable letters.
Right.
Where, I'll have to go back, buy and check. Okay.
I don't think it's up yet.
No.
No, it's not up yet.
They have their problems. They have their tank in the ground.
It's floating away.
It did, it poured it out.
Really?
Yeah.
Because there was no liquid in it?
It was, it was empty, but that's a very wet area.
That whole area is a high water table. Yeah.
Wow.
I just overheard somebody talking about it on election day, that it floated up, and the crushed rock on the sides slid in.
Well, underneath it, oh yeah, now they gotta take it out, dig it out.
Does that mean they have to put in a pump to take out the water?
No.
When the tank is not full?
Once it's got some ballast on top, they'll be all right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the details.
The concrete pad holds it down.
It's going to be under a concrete pad?
Yeah, they all are typically.
Of course, we could see that concrete pad.
Yeah, whole thing could come up, Bruce, and the mobile station goes like this. You were mentioning kennels. I was thinking about limiting it to a number of breeding females.
I think that's the easier way to do it, I mean, if they have.
You're saying 20 dogs? Because you might have 15 dogs, and all of a sudden you get a litter of six, and you're like, whoops. A litter of five, I guess, would be too many, but anyway.
If you limit it to breeding females, you could have any number of males, and you could have any number of puppies, and you could have any number of spayed or neutered females.
You can still put a cap on it, and you could say no, no more than X amount of canines to include no more than two breeding females.
I don't know what's practical, whether 20 is really a practical number if you consider litters of puppies.
Yeah, that's the problem.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, you could have eight in a litter, real easy.
Well, if, if you exclude puppies and just talk about adults or dogs over, you know, so many months, would that help?
If they're breeding kennel, the idea is, they're not gonna have any puppies less than a year old, was there?
Right.
I'm sorry. There's kennels of guys that got beagles for chasing rabbits, and there's kennels of guys that got hounds to chase bears, and there's all kinds of kennels. So, I don't think we can just assume that a kennel is gonna be somebody that wants to breed dogs for profit. I mean, I, you know.
What you mean, I, I don't understand these different kinds of kennels. I thought kennel was always for breeding purposes, is that not true?
I don't think so.
No.
Could be for boarding.
When you're boarding, boarding dogs, could be sled dogs.
Yeah. If I get, I mean, I have four dogs, I need one more, I need a kennel license.
For any kind of.
I think it's five.
Barking animals, or.
Is that the state limit?
I think so.
Or assistance.
I think so. They said that, actually, I think was.
Well, then we need to figure out what it is we're trying to do, because a Gail Fisher type training facility is very different from mom and dad breeding two or three females on the back 40, and I'm not sure how far you want it to go in introducing commercial activity into the rural agricultural zone.
Are we limiting it to rural ag, or are we gonna roll it out to residential also?
No.
I don't think residential.
My personal feelings on breeding animal, on breeding dogs specifically aside, I would still try to limit it down to one female.
One?
Yeah.
Well, geez, why do you have a, you mean, so I have a pet?
One breeding female for breeding purposes.
So if I have two females, not for breeding purposes, I have two, two pets, and they get pregnant, I'm in trouble?
Yep.
And so are they, obviously, but, geez.
Realistically, whatever we come up with, who's gonna enforce it?
Neighbors.
Yeah, we'd be probably, you're right.
That's an, that's an ACO, that's a police issue at that point, a barking dog.
A barking dog maybe, but if the barking dog leads to an investigation that results in the termination of, in a violation of the kennel provision, the.
Oh, I thought it was a really simple discussion.
Chip might get in there and enforce that, or certainly the neighbors could, would learn about it and take legal action. So I'm not worried about enforcing this, this is, this is one of those, I think, is practically self-enforcement.
I, I think we probably need some research before we set a number, you know.
Do other towns have such?
Exactly. What, what is allowed in, in other towns, the comparable size, where they have a rural ag.
Or is this a self-governing type of industry? I mean, they have to feed these dogs.
Craig, if, if Chip puts out a notice that indicates we're going to be talking about kennels and amending the ordinance, there might be some people who come forward and want to discuss this issue, not just the folks who brought the issue to our attention, but other people, and we might get some good information that way.
Well, wouldn't that come about when we have our first hearing or whatever?
Yes, in two weeks.
One week.
One week, next week.
Next week?
Yeah. That one's already, that one's already posted.
Oh, that is posted?
Yeah, Chip already sent the email out for us.
So we have a hearing on something that we haven't drafted?
We're having a hearing on, the first hearing on zoning ordinance revisions.
Yeah, Chip already.
Very vague.
Chip already sent the email out for us.
So, did he put in the, in the notice, the subjects of the hearing?
No.
No. He just said that we're having.
We normally don't the first one.
Oh.
Then the second one gets very specific, the third one gets, that's it, basically. But it's good that we're talking about this.
You're pretty good at doing research, to find out if there are ordinances that either neighboring towns have, or that's common in New Hampshire, maybe Southern New Hampshire has something on this.
I'll try to have some connection for that.
When we first brought this up, I thought we were just going to add kennel to the list. You know, we have.
Yeah.
Or dogs, or whatever, because it met intentions, different types of farm animals, and I thought we were just gonna add kennels to the list, so we do need to expand on it, but.
But I don't know what a kennel is.
I was gonna say, he mentioned.
Is it cats, dogs, sheep?
I've never heard of a cat kennel.
Well, we need to, we need to make sure that kennel, in fact, refers to dogs.
Yeah, well, dog kennel, that's what we're talking about, just call it dog kennel.
I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any state laws that limit number of cats, like dogs at five, or what is that number?
Dogs at four.
Four.
That one, I think. I mean, I don't think we want to get into something that's so specific that anybody who just owns multiple dogs has to have a kennel license. You know, we want to be careful, we don't inhibit people like that. If we move to cats, we'd be in trouble, because there, some people have a lot of cats.
But I didn't think this was, was going to require a license, this was going to be an allowed use, so you wouldn't get a license, you would just do it.
I just throw this one out there, what about a boarding facility, temporary animal boarding, is that gonna be classified as a kennel or no?
That's what we need to decide.
Well, I would think it would.
They're gonna board dogs.
Really?
Okay. But then we get into a problem, okay, the vet boards animals.
Right.
But he's not in rural agricultural zone.
Isn't he in the commercial zone? I mean.
Village, probably.
The one next to the mobile station, that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, actually, that crosses, I think, from village into commercial. I think, I think right at Quaker Street, it changes to commercial from village.
Yes, on the other side of Quaker, it's commercial.
I did find a quick def, well, not really quick, definition by Agriculture Department in Dead, Pennsylvania for kennel licensing, and going by definition, kennel, and any establishment in or through which at least 26 dogs are kept or transferred in a calendar year, or as a boarding kennel, as defined in this act. This goes on and on and on, we're talking multiple pages, so I'll print this off, or I'll email everybody this.
It's gotta be real short for us to be able to deal with it. 26 pages is not gonna happen in our zoning ordinance.
No, but, I mean, I don't, there may be something in New Hampshire RSAs, and I just did a quick search, but I mean, they, they, they break kennel out by kennel, private kennel, pet shop kennel, dealer kennel, rescue network kennel, research kennel, boarding kennels, nonprofits, commercials, so I think we should just have a dog kennel, and see what happens over a couple of years. We have to bring it back.
If we have to make a cat kennel, we can make another order for a cat kennel.
There's another way to do it, it's just this dogs as farm animals, farm animals, or whatever it says, including dogs, if there are not more than X, or however you want it, limit that. We don't limit cattle, though.
So whoever tells them the number 20 wasn't far off.
Well, they said 26 transferred in a year.
Yeah, right, that could be.
And that's just it, yeah, but, and then.
Anything less than that didn't require a license, presumably.
Without researching, I can't say.
The, the previous applicants mentioned if you had five, you had to have a kennel license in New Hampshire.
That's why I got that one.
Oh, really?
I think that's what they said, that included pets. That's, that's all I need, that's all I know, so there should be something in.
I'll see if I can find anything, and I'll, I'll email it, or I'll bring it into the next meeting.
Because that's the Reader's Digest average version. Yeah, see, see if you can, there's gotta be something.
I'm sure there is.
If there's 26 pages in Pennsylvania, New Hampshire's got three.
So is there something else, Craig, that we had on our list?
Well, I don't mean to be sticking them out about the signs, but Tucker Jack Dibbin about it, about that mobile thing, and, and his conversations with Bill Dresser, Bill had mentioned to him that, in reviewing our sign limits, because of that mobile thing, that we really should do something about, as long as, if, the sign that, you can, what the ordinance said, it's not, you can't change it, it has to look and feel like a static sign.
But it's going to be lit?
Doesn't, well, the way they're lit now, they look like, if it looks and feels like a static sign, it's not lit enough to give off light.
What happens at night? At nine o'clock?
You could put in there for, they have to shut it off at a specific time.
We have in there, although not everybody follows it, that the signs are supposed to be shut off if business isn't open.
Right.
That's already in our ordinance, but it's not, it's.
I think it's changed.
I don't think so.
I think that got changed.
It got changed, per, depending on the zone, I think, didn't it? Commercial, I could have it open all the time, on all the times, up there.
I think they were able to stay.
This doesn't have the new sign on it, sir. Mine doesn't, anyway.
You're kidding.
No.
That's your mother went away prematurely?
Last amendment date here is 11, 2011.
Standards does not, I think what it was, is there was no time limit, and I think we did not add one specifically.
It's older, right?
Yeah.
This particular 3411 was amended in 2011, so I don't know what was prior to that.
Yeah, but we don't have the new sign ordinance in here.
We don't? I thought we did.
So do I, but we don't.
Oh, wonderful. Is that not the new sign ordinance?
Good sign. It says, it says all through the ordinance, amended 2011.
How could we, how could they, how could Chip give us something that on the cover says updated through March 2016?
Maybe that's why he's not here, because we know he knows.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I threw mine away, I'm 99, I'm premature.
I see if the online version has any difference.
I don't.
Can't imagine. What about the phone? Can't make it work.
No, this isn't.
Yes, it is. Definitely, definitely the old ordinance.
Yeah.
So I guess the, maybe the smartest thing would be just check, because Dresser's pretty familiar with the ordinance because of that thing, maybe just a call to him, see what he recommends.
Well, what are you, the last year's?
I don't think we need to make a substantial change, I think it's just a sentence or two.
So that means somebody, let's assume the sign is, is four by four, okay? They could have the entire thing LED, and have it lit, and have it on 24/7.
Well, I don't know, we, we had some time limits in our sign ordinance, it all depends on what zone you were in, and what was allowed to be on all night.
The commercial district.
The commercial district, yep. I believe commercial was on, they didn't.
I, I think you're right, I think, I think in commercial zone, we did not, commercial and industrial, we did not set a time.
Right.
But I think it was up till like nine or 10 o'clock, and residential and rural ag, I think.
Yeah, I don't, I.
But, but your point is, Bruce, that whether the sign is lit by LED, or whether the sign is a painted sign lit by a hundred watt bulb, the effect is the same, you're going to have a lit sign 24/7.
Whatever the ordinance.
Whatever the ordinance said, I'm speaking of the commercial zone.
Yep. But the, the idea is that, we can't say whether it has to be a painted sign or an LED sign, it's up to the landowner which type they want to put up.
We've said we can't have an internally lit sign.
But, but the LEDs, I think there's a way to limit in the language on how many lumens it can be, so it doesn't look like, because the LED, if you look at it, right, like that television, it's not, I mean, that's kinda bright, but that's not the same as an intern that would, I would think of as an internally lit sign with a piece of plastic with fluorescent light bulbs behind it, which can be bright, especially if the sign's got a crack in it or a piece, chunk out of it. But the technology is there, so that it, it looks and feels like a static, normal sign that we allow, we have to allow it.
I think that's how they got the variance, basically.
Right.
Not to say we can't just let everybody go get a variance, because they want the LED light, but. Either way, kind of disappointed our ordinances.
Top part.
Yes.
Incomplete, but.
Even the website version does, does not reflect the proper, the proper version of 34.
Well, what about Article 1 through 33?
You mean to cast doubt on whether they're up to date?
Right.
They'll be working off the wrong.
If not, I have them at home. I thought he said they were.
Updated through March 2016, before or after the vote?
No, through March 16. That means the end of the month, through means completed to the end of the month.
What else could we modify last year?
The size of some signs?
Oh, the entire sign ordinance, essentially.
Other than size.
Driveways, with driveways.
Let's see, we did 27311.
27. Yeah, that was the in-law apartment.
2739.
Oh, in-law apartment, that brings up another good point.
Yeah, we, I don't know if we should change that or not. The in-law apartment size went up according to some.
750 square feet with state law now that takes effect this coming June, I think.
We need to change, we need to modify our ordinance to reflect those state changes on in-law apartments, you're absolutely right.
And I think all it is is the square footage, I think the rest of it's fine.
We did 3121.
This is wrong, because the definition of driveways is still a single, one single paragraph, one sentence.
We changed the 41 definitions.
Yeah, 3121 was last amended in 2010, so we need to get an updated version.
We did Article 17.
Mr. Chairman, would you make it your business as soon as possible to hit Chip and get this to us for the next meeting? I don't see how we can possibly talk about amending the ordinance if we don't have the current version.
We haven't had to prepare an ordinance for like three years now, but I'll bug them again, yes. I got two asterisks beside that one already. Thank you. I don't know, but that's not the definition of driveway anymore.
Okay, so we've got two things, the kennels and the.
In-law.
Signs, and what was it?
In-law apartment.
In-laws.
And the in-law apartment.
What was the change on in-laws? I'm sorry, I was looking at this, paying attention.
Well, the state, 750 square feet, it, no, this is, you get the court of the state law, and our rules are essentially the same. You can do an accessory apartment, in-law apartment, workforce housing, whatever they want to call it, on any legal dwelling in town.
Okay.
It still has to meet setbacks and all that, and it has to be 750 square feet, you can limit it to 750 square feet, you can make it bigger if you want. You can't limit the number of bedrooms, which we didn't do.
I thought we did.
No, we didn't, we.
Oh, and we limited the number of rooms, we limited something, though.
No, we limited the square footage, that's, that was all.
I thought we limited it to one bedroom, also.
Nope, we talked about it, but we didn't do that.
I know we discussed that, couldn't remember.
But the way we have it with the special exception was still requiring a door off the side, not on the front, that's still all legit.
Okay.
I don't, I think the only thing we need to change is the square footage.
Didn't we require that there be a connection between the in-law apartment and the main residence?
Yeah, a doorway.
And I know, and I don't know if the state ordinance changed that.
I'd guess that would be the only thing we gotta look at, is that.
Can I ask a dumb question? Where is that in our regulations?
In the version we don't have.
No, it should be in here, it's been in here a long time.
That's a decade, yeah, for decades.
Yeah, it has been, yeah.
I see 650 square feet, but I don't see anything else.
No. Where are you?
In the definitions.
It's a conditional use in probably RA, our zone, because it's allowed by special exception, which you can still do.
Yeah, there it is, there, there it is, the RA.
We, Tom, we define kennel in our ordinance. A building, if kennel means a building, a land used for commercial boarding or breeding for or more dogs, whatever that means.
Then all we gotta do is add kennel for the other.
No, but it, it's a building or land.
15?
15.
It's not allowed anywhere, we do have definition of it.
Yeah, I wonder, does it appear in the ordinance anywhere?
Yeah, we do have more than only one bedroom, we have to take that. Okay.
Yeah, and adding the word "commercial" means everything, it takes away the worry of pet owners who have to worry about dogs.
Dwelling accessory attached apartment, an accessory dwelling unit consisting of not more than 650 square feet, constructed within or attached to a single attached residence. Accessory attached apartments may be granted by, except by a special exception. I don't think, I'm not sure that the state law a lot would authorize us to require a special exception. I don't know, but I think that's something we need to look at. You know, there's another thing, Craig, if you gave Southern New Hampshire a call and asked them, were there any statutory changes made that require us to update our ordinance, number one, number two, if the answer is yes, which it will be, do you have any suggested language or, you know? Ben Frost might have given them some language on the accessory apartments, because he was leading the charge on that issue.
I'm pretty sure, if I dig back in my archives of work, I have it also. If I dig back in my archives of work, I have it also. Because we do say 650 feet in one bedroom.
Did it say one bedroom?
Yeah.
In 19...
Page 25.
Yeah, page 25. 19-1, 10-1.
The definition doesn't mention...
No.
No.
Bringing back to you real quick, Neil. Your question, did kennel appear anywhere else on the ordinance and did not? Just did a quick search for that word and it does not come up anywhere else.
I love this. We defined something and never used the definition.
Well, maybe at some point we did.
And never removed the definition, yeah.
You got to have one checking door. Could be attached.
We can still have it attached.
Yeah.
The state doesn't require it be attached, but they say the town can have that as stipulation.
Why can't we have it as a detached building?
According to the state, you can.
Why can't we as a town, though?
Do what?
Have an in-law apartment in a garage, a public garage. What's the reasoning behind?
What precludes us from doing that?
Because it has to be attached.
Isn't the garage attached?
It's a detached garage. Or you convert a room in a... You convert part of your barn into an in-law apartment.
But the way we define in-law apartment, I thought there had to be a connection with the residence.
Yes.
Yes, but my question is, why are we requiring that? And why... Why can we not have it as a... Why can we not have it in a separate building?
Because then you, then you in effect have two residences on one lot.
No different than a duplex?
But in a duplex, then you have to have double the acreage. It's in the residential zone, two acres per dwelling unit.
Yep.
That would be four.
Okay.
Whereas this doesn't require any additional acreage. And the consequence for doing that is to have it attached. Or the condition for doing that, not the consequence.
So if they have four acres, then they could have it detached?
They can do it now.
That's what I'm asking.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I'm not sure in the residence...
You can't do it. You can't have multiple residential units on a single lot regardless.
You can't have two primary uses.
But you could have... You could have a duplex on a single lot.
Yes.
Attached.
Yes.
The duplex means two units together.
Mm-hmm.
I think that if you, you know, splitting hairs, but if the garage were in fact used as a garage and you put the apartment over it, then it would be different than if you had a garage and turned it in... Turned that garage into a dwelling for Grandma. Because, you know, it doesn't say that, I know. But I think there would be... An argument could be made that it's already part of your dwelling, attached or not, because it's your garage and you're putting the apartment over that existing garage. I'm not saying that that's right. I'm saying that I think that's an argument that could...
You definitely need to go into land use law. I think your arguments are very clever.
Yeah, wow, apartments or garages. Maybe this funny in my future.
Yeah. My living room's our garage.
There's other issues besides...
Look, the purpose of the discussion is to make sure that we bring it up at the hearing. We don't have to resolve anything.
Well, that's something we want to bring up at the hearing, is my question.
We have...
You can bring up anything you want.
We have to bring this up. We have to change this.
We have to change to 650.
Right.
We know that.
So as soon as I bring it up, I'll bring up the having...
I missed something about that 650.
Square feet.
The state...
In-law apartments, I guess.
The state passed a statute effective next July that says everybody in... I don't know if it's every zoning unit, but wherever you allow...
Housing. Single-family housing.
Single-family... I think that's it. Single-family housing. You have to allow a workforce housing, in-law apartment, whatever you want to call it. And the state is specific. It's attached, but it has to have at least 750 square feet. It must... You must allow it for up to 750 square feet. If you want more, you can do it, but you cannot limit it to 650
Right.
the way we have. And you cannot restrict the number of bedrooms.
Number of bedrooms, right.
So that's where the 650 identity...
Right.
I didn't know it connected with that.
We have 650 in ours, the state in effect.
And there is some mention there of a connecting door. I don't remember what it is.
So hopefully, Southern New Hampshire has some language that will help us.
Yeah.
So if you put a breezeway between the garage and the house, you're all set?
Right.
No.
It's charged.
No.
The roof is...
You have to have the door. The connecting door.
That's what I said. The state has some guidance in there, a limitation on the connecting door language.
Oh.
So...
Anything else?
I think that was it, the zone.
After everybody, accessory unit.
So, three things.
Kennels, LED, accessory apartments. Give Southern New Hampshire a call. What was that?
A new copy of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that's the biggie.
Yeah.
Yeah, if he doesn't have it, I will work on getting it updated.
Well, it's not just the sign ordinance, it's also the driveway ordinance.
Yeah, so I have the updated material for the driveway, I believe electronically.
I hope so, because it might be deleted out of my computer.
But everything else, I definitely have because of the meeting.
Could it be that it was just a foul up and he pressed the wrong button and duplicated the current?
I have any thoughts on that. The problem is, the online version is also this. It does not show the... Any changes that we made last year. That the town approved, I should say.
Tina, didn't you... Weren't you paid in fact to update all of this?
Well, I got everything late. So I thought he said he had Naomi or somebody upstairs do it, so I stopped doing it.
This is the unupdated.
Because everything that I got... I got it late when I first came on board, so I didn't do it. So he had somebody else do it. Or he said he had somebody else do it, so I didn't bother to do it. So I'm doing the zoning ones, the one that we're currently working on. So those will be updated by me once we're finished.
Subdivision regs, you mean?
Huh?
Subdivision regs.
Yeah, sorry. I just didn't mean subdivision around that zoning.
So my question is, if we cannot get...
But I did the... I did the site plan ones. Those are done with the dates and stuff on them, so that should be correct.
So if we cannot get a latest copy of the zoning ordinance for next week, we bother even having a meeting next week?
We have to.
To discuss this?
We have to.
We have to, it's been posted.
Oh, you can postpone it.
We can.
But then we screw up our whole timeframe schedule for meeting the due dates.
I will see what I can do over the weekend, so that's...
Well, no, we got to coordinate with Chip. Are we... We're closed tomorrow, aren't we? It's Veterans Day.
Yes.
Yeah. I can start working on it this weekend and then go in on Monday. Well, I got something here Monday anyway, so I will...
I would wait till Monday because I have a feeling Naomi or somebody upstairs did something and may have hit the wrong button on the computer.
Printed the wrong file or something.
Maybe. There might be a simple fix.
Do you think the whole zoning ordinance is outdated?
Well, I know the driveway regulation changed too, and it's not changing here. So is it just the last year's stuff, or is it...
Tina, I'm looking at the site plan review, and it's different from the zoning ordinance in the sense that the zoning ordinance, in a particular article, lists the date it was amended or changed.
Yeah.
And you didn't... And I didn't see any of those in the site plan review. Was that because you were updating it to 16 and all of those you deleted?
They should have the stuff in there, like where I changed the prices. They should have the dates in there. I don't have my copy here with me, so I don't know.
Craig, if you're unable to get a printed copy of this in time, if you can email me the file, I'll spend a couple of dollars on a ream of paper and just print off copies.
I'll grab one. I'll grab one here.
It says it on the cover page, and I don't see any dates in there. I'm... There could be one, but I just haven't found it. Which I suppose is the correct way to do it because the amendment was...
Yes, they know we changed the prices.
But there's no date on them.
I'll put those in there. I'm trying to think of what else we changed.
Would that be necessary of the whole...
It's not. It's not necessary at all. My point is that because they're not in here, which is the proper way to do it, and because they're all over the zoning ordinance itself, and all throughout the articles, it seems to me that...
They have a date, at least on the front one, with last month.
We had a little discussion about that.
4/5/16.
Yes.
For the site plan.
I'll check my copy when I get home.
And I think it's done correctly. And I would have expected if we had the zoning ordinance changed and on the coverage that revised through March 2016, there would be no individually dated sections.
We had a discussion about that, oh, boy. When Naomi was still land use coordinator. Because a lot of towns do that. So that when you are... With my other hand in my head, it's easier to find when the zoning ordinance is changed to see, okay, I got a subdivision approved in 2008.
It could be helped.
And I can very easily go back and say, oh, okay, this thing was updated in 2009. So you go back to 2009 version, see what... It makes it very easy to go backwards. And you have to with those kind of things.
On page 80, with respect to the zoning ordinance, Article 36, driveways.
We have Article 36.
That's what it says.
Cool.
Added 310-15.
Three years ago.
Why?
No, last year. This is 16. And so the question is, does this represent... I don't remember any of the specific changes that we've made. Does anybody?
Oh, yeah.
Is this...
This looks like the...
Yeah, this looks like it.
This is it?
Yeah.
So what were you reading?
The definition is just that one page, one sentence that...
So the definition wasn't changed, you think?
I think the definition was changed, but I thought there was more in it than what is there. The definition just says driveway shall mean any access to a lot tracked or parcelled in. Driveway shall be located on the front, is that we use determined minimum lot size? That's it. I guess that's sufficient if we have Article 36.
That's true, because we never had enough in articles in this... Okay.
Yeah, new article added 310-15. So it's two years ago.
Article 34 is still outdated.
Article 34 is definitely outdated.
I have everything from the last few years at home. I can check the press reference that.
Do you have a copy of the updated zoning ordinance?
I don't know if I have that.
This is the zoning, this is...
Yeah, no, let's...
Zoning. All right. I'll read them.
Supposedly. Okay. Either way, we got to back up and make sure the regulations, the zoning warrants that we have are correct. Because we know the sign ordinance is...
Now we can turn to the subdivision changes.
Mr. Fillmore sent this thing out back in a month and a half ago. I'll cover second. Anybody looked at it or hasn't?
What was it?
Page, a letter in front of the table.
I meant a table.
You think that copy room's unlocked?
The room's not locked. But the machine is, and there's quarters in...
Tina has quarters.
Was that the email says, I've made the proposed changes to our road standards?
Yes.
Okay, problem.
I don't know. I don't have that part of it.
You need a copy, Ken? Yeah, please.
Same.
Letter we're discussing.
Roads.
Question, on the website, it lists that there's an opening for a member. Is that inaccurate?
For a member?
Yeah, of the planning board. Says member vacant.
That was probably from, what, 1830?
Don't know. I just thought that was kind of odd.
Yes.
Well, maybe it's an alternate. I mean, you know, yours is alternate, but we have...
Then it's mislabeled then.
Yeah, I believe that they're...
It'd be nice to have two alternates, that's for sure.
Provision for two alternates.
I think it's up to five.
Five alternates? Pretty crowded around here.
Yeah.
We're not going to be able to get five orders. There's no way.
This is exciting.
It is, isn't it?
I haven't even bothered to try typing it.
Put pause. That's not P-A-W, that was earlier than you knew.
It's going to be interesting, how to figure it out on the tape.
Go back to YouTube.
Oh, no, I have the... I have the tape.
Planning to roast a dog by decision.
That could be a headline of your next article?
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a newspaper to put it in.
What happened on the community news, is it done?
It's done, no money.
Oh, okay.
We have debts.
I guess at one point I could have been considered a kennel. Not no more, I don't have any. Only had a lone cat.
Going back to the whole kennel thing, I'm getting limited to dogs, so the horse breeding facility.
I don't think you'd call a horse breeding facility a kennel. You'd call it a stable.
But isn't that allowed under the concept of agriculture horses?
I haven't. Well, I'm... I just... It's just popped in my head, I was wondering.
I can't imagine us doing that. I'm not sure about... I'm not even sure about limiting the number of dogs.
Yeah, I thought I had those minutes there, but we approved them, so I don't have any. I think you said they had three plus... I think they had three plus two of their own pets, that they had total of five. And then you classified it as breeding.
What are we waiting for?
Copies.
Copies of what?
Bruce's proposal for road width.
Bruce was nice enough to put together this little chart for us.
Are we having a moment of silence?
That's a plan.
Board of Selectmen. And their moments of silence are much more limited than one that we're having now.
They just wouldn't allow it.
This is a moment of meditation.
Yes.
They just wouldn't allow it. They wouldn't allow it in public all the time, to take a break, that's all.
In the commercial zoning district, permitted uses agriculture excluding the grazing, care, and keeping care, and keeping of such livestock as cows, horses, goats, pigs, and poultry as a gainful business.
So even in commercial, you can't breed?
No. Well, we don't know what agriculture is. But whatever agriculture is, you can't graze, care, or keep livestock. So probably you could grow vegetables, for example.
I could eat one property that's got a problem with that.
Doesn't that say for...
It may be pre-existing use.
But it says for business, doesn't it, I think?
Yes, as a gainful business, so if you want...
So if you just have a pony?
In your commercial district, that's fine.
But if you're selling milk, you got a problem.
Or eggs.
Or eggs.
You see the P and G in coffee operation, have we got one?
You what?
P and G in coffee operation.
You need a pilot's license for that.
We got a new copier working, put the old one in the back room for the secretaries thing to use. I want the old one back. It was since you go up and you hit a button, and you got six copies.
In the residential district, the same definition, agriculture, but excluding grazing, et cetera, as a gainful business. Okay, so you can keep your cows and milk your cows.
Because they can't eat.
They can eat, they can graze, as long as it's not part of a business. If you're selling the milk, you have a problem.
So somebody who has a herd of goats as a lane clearing operation?
On his two acres in the residential district is legal.
Only in residential.
Well, no, I, there are other, here, in rural agriculture, agriculture including, not excluding, including grazing, care, et cetera, as a gainful business.
Strangle a copper if you do it right now.
They're strangling the copies?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go make another copy.
I'll make it, I'll make it my turn.
Didn't think this whole county would handle it.
So she has her pilot's license?
Yes. I agree with Bruce.
Why work with them all day long, too? But not all day long, but enough.
Okay, so Bruce came up with, well, I'll let Bruce explain where he, how he did this.
The first thing I did was a lot of other towns, most other towns, instead of having a thing in paragraph form, when it comes to road geometric standards, they have them in a table, which kinda makes it easier to follow, especially if you have more than one value for each, for a different items on the table. So I kind of went through and put our, everything that we have in a table, which is, if you look at the table, which is essentially the, what now is the local road.
What were the highlighted parts?
The highlighted parts, items that I changed.
Okay.
So anything that's highlighted is a new value.
Okay.
Anything that's not highlighted is what's currently in our regulations. Except for the low volume, we don't have a low volume category in our regulation at all right now. We have local and arterial.
Okay.
And after going through it and looking at some of the state definitions of what local roads are, what arterial roads are, I noticed some, we were calling arterial roads, roads that aren't really arterial roads. If you look at the definition of an arterial road, it's a road that collects traffic from other roads and, and sections of your, your town.
Like Concord State.
Like Concord State, yeah, every state road would be an arterial road.
River Road probably would be.
Right, and that's, that's what my assumptions are, that River Road is probably an arterial road. Maybe part of Hodgins Road maybe is an arterial road, or maybe from the intersection at Clinton Grove out to 149. Reservoir Drive, maybe a part of that might be an arterial road, but not the whole thing. But if you really look at it, I mean, we really don't have a lot of arterial roads. Most of the roads are local roads. If you, if you consider really what the definition of arterial road is. And even, like the average daily trips, everything, I have everything highlighted because I don't, I don't think we have an everyday daily trip description in our regulations at all. And that's really how you distinguish the difference between the road types. So I put it together, one, I put, I put the low volume thing on there for discussion, but the, the table, I think, the whole table idea, I think is a good idea that we ought to incorporate into our regulations regardless, whether we change anything or not.
A lot easier to...
It's a lot easier for the designers and everybody else to look at and figure things out.
Yep.
And then the other thing I looked at was, even if we don't modify the pavement width as of shown here, a way to help make things seem more rural is when Southern Hampshire Planning and all these planning commissions came to, came into effect in the seventies when zoning really was adopted by the state and started to be adopted by the towns, they come up with lot sizing, I mean, that, that's really where all our, every town, that's where they started from, that was their baseline, with where they came from, road furniture lots, lot sizing, lot areas, road geometry, I mean, it all came from them. And they had to start somewhere, I'm not faulting anybody, but their road standards, which a lot of towns really haven't changed since then, including us, really are describing, they want roads as straight as narrow. The straighter and wider and you can build them, the better you meet their standards, which makes friggin highways everywhere. But in rural areas, you know, we are doing, if you, if you, you don't necessarily have to make them narrow, I mean, that was just one of, one of the things we had thrown out. But to, to make the tangents tighter, instead of spreading them out 200 feet, which they are now, or 100 feet, bring the tangents in, make the vertical curves a little tighter.
When you say bring the tangents in?
From curve to curve.
Okay.
The, the straight section in between those curves is called the tangent.
Okay, gotcha.
So if we bring those tangents in, and I'm not opposed to not having a tangent requirement at all on, on some of the smaller roads, because that makes the road a windy road, which slows traffic down and makes it more scenic.
But from a maintenance standpoint, wouldn't that be a pain for the, for the town plot driver?
Well, that's what...
I'm sure they like nice straight roads, yes.
Yeah.
They, they, I mean, Benji would like every road to be a, a straight shot.
Sure, yeah.
But that's not aesthetically pleasing.
Yep.
It's not, I mean...
I don't wanna grid down either.
Right. And it eliminates the grids, because now you're forcing developers to make the roads, instead of straight, put some curves to them.
Well, I was gonna say, instead of a minimum tangent length, decreasing it from whatever it is, instead of decreasing the minimum tangent length between curves, set a maximum tangent length.
Right.
Whatever. Don't, don't let anybody design a thousand-foot long road straight with a cul-de-sac. Force a couple of curves in that. Like poorless drivers, for instance, I'm sure.
Well, what, what, I mean, there's some leniency in that, I just, if, if property we won't allow for it, right-of-way access, whatever. There has to be some kind of...
You can ask for waivers, no problem.
Yeah, this is all subdivision requirements, it's all waiverable.
Okay, all right.
Because the thing that makes roads safe or unsafe, as Craig knows, is this, the K factor and the crest vertical curve and the sag vertical curve, because that's what people can't see over the crest of a hill, where they get to a bottom, it's a rollercoaster dip.
Yep.
You can't see up, the other side, when you're...
Those are, those are the two variables that affect that geometry of the road, which is more...
That affects the vertical geometry.
Right.
Yes.
Which, which is a, a big part of the safety factor of a road.
Those mean nothing, means I have to rely on your expertise to say what, if those are good or bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see even in the middle of Ware Center, the rise in the road near the town hall blocks traffic that's very close coming north. I know exactly what you're talking about.
When you say blocks, what do you mean? Visual?
You can be under the crest and you can't see over the crest.
You can't see over the crest, right.
And the crest is so, it's, it's not, it's not gradual enough, that you feel comfortable going over it, you can see, you can't maintain your visual sight far enough ahead of you as you go over it.
So if you're turning into the town hall...
It's almost like a blind turn.
Coming from the north, you, you do, it's a blind turn. So you're more safe if you go over the crest and turn on the other side and commit to the driveway that way.
Yeah.
So that's...
The other thing I would like to do on this, on this, I mean, most of this, Bruce just copied out of our regulations, which is good, but I would like to see us get rid of the superelevation entirely, which is, oh...
That's when you just, there's no crown to the road, the whole road is pitched like this?
Oh, yeah.
Like stocks on one side and goes to the other side?
Creates two issues. One, when you go from the crown to the superelevation, somewhere the water has to transition from flowing, flowing the other direction. So the whole transition period ends up, ends up puddling, freezing, et cetera. Happens twice, obviously. The other issue, if it's icy and you're going slow, you're just lying down the hill.
Going fast, you're still slipping down.
Yeah.
Usually with superelevated sections of road, there's no crown, it's just flat from one side to the other, they eliminate the crown completely.
Why, why is that even a thing?
In this eighties and early nineties, they were trying to, they were designing highways and some civil engineering, there was a chart saying, depending on the design speed, what your, what your super elevation should be, depending how sharp the curve is.
Okay, so you're talking banking and a turn?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that makes more sense. I'm thinking the straightaway doesn't make any sense.
No, no.
No, no. They're banking on a turn.
Okay.
They say banking on a turn, you still need that crest in the middle of the road.
Yes, you still want the 2% crown.
And a super elevation defeats it.
You don't wanna eliminate that crown. You know, you don't wanna have the whole road, you know, banked one way. Like I said, creates two problems, one, puddling and freezing at the beginning and end of the transition from the crown to the superelevation, because you have, you're gonna have a spot where it's gonna be flat.
Then a superelevated road encourages speed.
Yes.
Because it's easier to drive around at a faster speed, just like a racetrack is.
The question, ADT, average daily trips, is that a round trip or a single trip?
It's a single, it's a single trip.
Single trip.
So when I go from my home to the store, that's one trip?
Two trips, once back, once out, once back.
Well, if I never come back, it's one trip.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and what's the average daily trips per house, it's like 15 or something, I think they figure, somewhere in there, right? 10 to 15? 10, hold on.
Pretty sure it's 10.
Yeah.
And of course, that varies with age. The younger...
We're not counting, we'll give you the ambulance trips, we won't count those.
We have to have a public hearing, right? On, on these?
Yes, we do.
And we probably should do that when? After we've done with the regular zoning?
Probably. I suppose they haven't done before that. Looks like it's gonna be February, yes.
But we're still standing, we're getting it done to update the subdivision regulations at the time of meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing this, Bruce.
I agree, having a chart makes it a lot easier for you.
So how would you put in a maximum tangent?
I'd pull a number out of the air, like 500.
So no more than a 500-foot long straightaway?
Straight section.
Yes.
And where would, you'd have to add another line to the chart?
Yes. I do have one question, I just thought of. Do we have a maximum cul-de-sac length right now? I didn't think we did.
Okay, maybe we don't.
I could be wrong.
What is a reverse curve?
You got one curve going this way, which is S-turn.
Okay, that's good. Why would you want a minimum tangent of anything? If you're trying to eliminate...
Well, that, that's my point.
Well, if you're trying to design the road for 45, 50, 60, 70 miles an hour, you wanna turn to the left, straighten out, and turn to the right. You don't wanna do it...
Oh, yeah, but you're already doing that in this town.
No, they're all, most of them are 30 mile an hour roads.
Most of them are 30.
But why even have a minimum? Why not just let it go from one turn to the other? Is there a reason to have a straightaway?
Um...
It's, certainly drives better. Depending on the speed limit, yes, you should have a right, you should have a tangent.
Yeah, but that might work in certain roads, but I can see John's point that, that if it's a small subdivision, nobody's gonna be going that fast anyway.
And some, and some of the curves, when you're talking curve, it doesn't have to be much of a curve, anything that's not a straight line is a curve.
Yep. But according to this, going based off of this in a low volume, I have to have a 50-foot straightaway section between the start of one curve and the end of another.
Right. Which, on a low volume, I, in everything but arterial, I agree with you, you really don't need, I don't think, a minimum tangent. Especially, because they're gonna, they have design guidelines, these guys that design roads, they're gonna use those regardless, because that's what they do for a living, they used to do on that.
Well, if, while I agree with what everybody's saying, if you have a 100-foot radius curve, which is a minimum allowed, at a low volume, 100-foot radius curve, it's pretty sharp.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty, that's, that's sharp.
Okay.
I do, I've, I've designed quite a few, quite a few roads and...
If somebody came in here with a 300-foot radius curves, they were reverse curves, we could get rid of the tangent as, on a waiver.
I, I know that a certain town allows you down to 200-foot centerline radius, you put a, I designed a road that was about, almost a nine-degree turn, basically. Everybody driving the shoulder. They cut the inside.
They cut the inside of the curve?
Right.
Yeah.
That, that's not good.
I'm craning curve up and down. No, I, I just, maybe it's just me, I don't understand the whole road building thing, but I don't even see why you need to have a minimum straightaway. Why can't you go from, why can't you transition from one turn to another?
I, I think if you combine the, if you combine the...
If you combine the speed limit with increasing the radius of the curve.
And, and the minimum vertical curve length, if you, so if you're not on the minimum curve length, you're gonna want that minimum tangent. But if they go over the minimum curve length, say they got 500-foot long curves, 500-foot curves, radius curve instead.
Straightaway's not gonna fall down.
Right, then you really don't need the tangent between them.
There's one town that said if the combined radius is over 1,500 feet, you don't need a tangent between them. If you have a curve to the right that's 500 square feet, or 500-foot radius, you have a curve to the left that's 1,000-foot radius, you don't need a tangent between them.
Okay. I guess, just because I don't understand it, I don't understand why we need to have a minimum, but you guys know a lot more about this than I do, so...
If you don't put the minimum there and they come in with minimum radius curves, you can't tell them that you gotta do a minimum.
Okay.
Also, remember a fire truck...
But you can waive it.
Right.
A fire truck can't get around a 40-foot radius curve on a driveway. Remember that conversation?
Oh, yeah, but it, it's not gonna matter if there's a straightaway.
Yeah, it is.
If, if, if they can get around that turn, a straightaway on the other end's not gonna make a damn bit of difference.
Exactly, true, I, I agree with you there.
So...
But if you're going around a 40-foot radius curve and you're having trouble making it, and all of a sudden you have to turn to the left on another 40-foot radius curve, that's gonna be tricky for anybody. 100's not a whole lot bigger than 40, really.
But if you put it in, and it can be waived.
Yep.
In specific situations, you know, I've got this ledge here, I don't wanna blast it or put the road in, so I'm asking for a waiver.
At the same time, still on the same subject...
You're not calling a tangent on our tangent?
I'm not gonna go off on a tangent, we're staying with tangent. I believe it was Tom reviewed a bunch of towns.
You're not going to tangent on our tangent?
I'm not gonna go off on a tangent, we're staying on the tangent. I believe it was Tom reviewed a bunch of towns. Like New Boston, Dunbarton, and Goffington, and Gofftown?
Yeah, I think it was given to Tom.
And Deering.
In regards to-
This-
Same chart.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I took it, I'm not going off on a tangent, I'm staying on the same subject. Deering doesn't get many roads built, so I don't know, Road Stewart, Deering's a good-
Yeah, that's really, they've kind of tossed that out.
Yeah, they haven't built a road in quite a while.
Right, a couple dirt roads, maybe. One paved road that they haven't approved.
Who's walking roads, Cal?
Talking about the minimum centerline radius, New Boston's at 200 feet.
For arterial road?
No. Primary, secondary.
Okay.
They're charts backwards, very backwards. Double asterisks is for, yes.
Does the state of New Hampshire have a-
Oh, boy. You wanna go 90 mile an hour down the road?
Yeah, we're not building 114.
No, I'm thinking standards in terms of volume arterial, local versus, okay, so there's no depth, there's no-
Pretty much, all their standards are based on building 114 all over again.
No, but I mean, in terms of just naming, so we can go base, we can have the same name of a category?
No, those are all over the place, I mean, all over the place.
Okay, I was just trying to think of-
I kind of had a hard time coming up with a number for that, because it's so erratic, what all the other towns have.
Like New Boston has minimum tangent lengths on those local roads, 200 feet.
Which is right out of the Southern Hampshire playbook.
Yep.
You have Gofftown there?
Gofftown really is so different from Ware as a town, but I'm not-
Oh, I know, no, I know, I understand that. But they had some unique ideas in their road standards.
Minimum-
And the other thing that Gofftown did was actually listed the arterial roads in town.
Yeah.
Listed?
They listed them. So it kind of gives you an idea of what other towns think arterial roads are. I think Wallace Road was one of them.
Yeah, I got the list, North Mass Street, Main Street, South Mass Road, Gofftown Back Road, Shirley Hill Road, Daniel Plummer Road, Center Street, Henry Bridge Road, St. Anselm's Drive.
Really, not Elm Street?
Elm Street, Mass Road, Plummer Road, you missed the last three.
And Penard Street.
Yes.
I mean, so they're pretty substantial roads.
By these standards, I don't think we have any or-
I think we have a couple.
River, I think you're right on river. But I don't know about Thorne Dyke and-
No, I wasn't thinking Thorne Dyke, I was thinking Hodgson from Quaker to 149. Not Quaker, but Clinton Grove.
Flanders.
Yeah.
Unless you looked at two together, Thorne Dyke and Hodgson, it's pretty much a two road.
Yeah, but seems, I think the road sort of divides at the point that you're talking about. A lot of people from Memorial North go out toward Concord, a lot of people from Memorial South go out toward Manchester or Hillsborough.
If school's not in session, some people from Abidja Bridges keep on going straight and come out up here. If school's in session, then we go 149, 149.
Got it.
So-
And all fences, schools.
So I really think arterial roads, I mean, I don't think you'll ever see one, I don't think I'll ever see one built in Ware in my lifetime.
Well-
There may be one, you may get a conversion.
We almost did a while ago, but-
Yeah, I know which one, that's the Colby Road down to-
To 114.
Yeah.
We almost did.
Yeah.
That would have been an arterial road, I believe.
So is somebody going to work on the tangent distance on?
Between now and February? I volunteer for that.
And also, you said something about a maximum straightaway, is that different?
Maximum tangent.
A maximum. I do have a question about this, Bruce. I'm looking at the triple asterisk at the bottom of the standards page.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, the double asterisk. For roads less than 24 feet, this means all the roads in town that are going to be built, because it's not arterial.
Right.
It was arterial. All utilities shall be buried.
Well, they could make the local oral volume roads 24 feet if they wanted to avoid that.
My concern is that the net effect of this ordinance will be to encourage wider roads, since it may be cheaper to build a wider road.
It's not anymore, though, but it's not anymore, what would it cost to put power in today? Public service, ever so, up their rate so high that it costs you about the same to put them underground or overhead.
And they probably did that on purpose.
If you dig in a trench, if you can dig, it's cheaper to put them underground by pennies. If you gotta hit ledge, it's a different story, that's where it's kind of up to the guy building a road, does he want to make it wider, or does he want to bury the utilities in the ledge?
You specify pavement in here, we don't have dirt roads.
We don't allow dirt roads.
We don't?
No.
Oh, okay.
Haven't since, that one on the top of Mountain Road, same little road up there?
When you say we don't, the ordinance doesn't require the road to be paved, does it?
Yeah. Right now, it certainly does.
Need a subdivision.
Yes.
Right.
Any new roads can be paved right now.
You know, Carl, and I think Tim, and I don't know about Benji, at one point, were telling us that it would be cheaper for us to have unpaved dirt roads than it is to have paved roads in terms of the cost of maintaining them.
When the asphalt goes to heck, it is.
No, you have to replace the asphalt periodically, you have to top it off, you have to shim it on occasion, and the cost of that is much greater on average than simply sending the grader down.
If you can control erosion. Ask them what-
I think the other question would be, how much traffic are you talking about on this gravel road? Because you may end up grading it in the springtime quite often.
And then it's also gonna depend on if you have people spinning their tires on the road as well.
You know what the high side of Maple looks like when we get a hurry, heavy rain, that road disappears.
Where?
Where?
It's, weather gets tight up, going up Maple all the way where?
Oh, but the crash down there?
Yes.
I think that discussion, Neil, was not so much in relation to subdivisions as in, should we pave existing dirt roads and expand? And we got into trouble on Luthkin Road, took the pavement law from that and left it unpaid and had multiple complaints from people who lived on it, finally put the pavement back on. Sorry, I don't think, and it was Carl, I'm pretty sure, I don't think Tim brought that. I think it was Carl who was talking about that.
But folks want their roads paved.
Well, also, if you think, suppose you're buying a new house in a subdivision, do you really want all that dust that comes with a dirt road?
I guess it depends on what kind of a subdivision it is.
So you don't have to worry about that.
Dust, if they got nice cars, they got a motorcycle, dirt roads aren't friendly.
With motorcycles, they certainly aren't, but then they're done that.
I think the developer would want to pave the roads just because of the-
I think the land value would be higher.
Salability of the house.
If a developer came in, for whatever reason, and said, hey, I'd rather not pave it, do we have the authority to allow that to happen?
Is it a waiver?
Yep, it's on the subdivision, we can waive it.
Okay.
So if somebody's building a subdivision off of a existing dirt road, that new road has to be paved?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless he gets a waiver.
Unless he gets a waiver.
Good point.
I've seen them in other towns, nice, beautiful paved road, 24-foot wide pavement off of 18-foot wide dirt road. Yes, it looked really silly.
And then the town has to pay for all the repairs, their transition all the time?
Well, since we're gonna hold off on this until February, is there anything else we want to discuss tonight? Are we gonna wait for subdivision vesting until February?
Was there anything else besides, you had something else in the minutes, in the-
We had a conceptual.
No, but was something else that we were gonna talk about?
I did?
Jeez, that's the best thing.
Yes, that's what I said, but it's gonna be in the subdivision regulations, so we haven't been doing it until February, or until February anyway.
You got some language?
I've got something to brush about, but I, I actually forgot, I was gonna take Wednesday and Thursday off work, so. Yes, I will, I'll email it out. It's a very generic thing from Bill, and he said right in it, I know you guys are gonna want to put timelines, specific things in it, but he sent me a generic thing just to cover the RSL. And I'm gonna take at least some of these Gofftown, New Boston, whichever, and make one chart, put everybody's stuff in it, and our stuff in it, to compare ours to theirs to theirs, the various towns on one piece of paper, or four. You know what I mean?
Why would you want to do that, Bruce is already-
This is Ware's.
That's right, Bruce's.
Wouldn't you want to look at-
But Bruce made-
Wouldn't you want to look at Gofftown at the same time?
I thought you looked at Gofftown.
I did. I kind of matched a bunch of stuff together, come up with that.
What Craig's saying is so we can look at Gofftown's original-
If you want to do it, sure.
Might have to go a little bit 17 this way, but-
Yeah, I'm gonna save that file, so you can play with it.
That's well?
Yeah. Word file?
Did you send in Word?
I don't know if I sent in Word or PDF, I don't know how I sent it.
Send it to me again, in Word, please. Anything else?
Don't, you, in Gofftown, I don't think is the right one to use, I think the other towns-
There's Hopkinton, he's, Hopkinton, New Boston-
Dunbarton, Deering.
Dunbarton, I think I'm gonna skip Deering, because they haven't built a road in-
I mean, I really didn't use Gofftowns and Deerings.
You did not?
No, I had them, and I just, I saw a couple things in Gofftown, like they listed the arterial roads, that's-
That's where you got that idea?
Yeah, but we don't, I didn't list them, I mean, because I think we only have one that's town-owned.
Okay.
Gofftown lists the state roads in there that are arterial roads too, so I mean, but-
Are we ready to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Unless we want to do minutes.
I didn't.
Me either.
Jeez, the one time I print out the minutes.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Me too.